Good morning, everyone. Today's Wednesday, August 25, 2021. It's the Order of Board of County Commissioners' Regular Meeting.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Weymeyer.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
And the Fledge of Allegiance.
Pastor Bob Pierceau of Michigan Valley Community Church.
What's that?
Did I get it right?
Yes, you did. Nice to have you all here, so let's just pray. Lord, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you, little God, for the lives that are here today to do business of the county. I pray, little God, that we would have the best interest of the people here always in our thoughts as they have a great responsibility to lead this county with the best wisdom and the best knowledge and the best that they can with what they know. So I pray, little God, that you would give them wisdom, that you would protect their hearts, that you would bring them into a consensus. And when there are difficulties and there are times, Lord, when there are disagreements, I pray, God, that they would come into unity. And when decisions are hard, maybe they would hold off on those decisions, Lord, until there is unity in a quorum. But I pray, little God, today that as you rain down on us that we would do everything that we can to glorify your holy name because you are the King of Kings and you are the Lord of Lords and you are the one that we serve ultimately. So as they serve here today, I pray, little God, that you just help them in their decisions. Help everybody that's here that is part of this that they would be able to make the best decisions best for this county. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, no correspondence today. Public comment? All right.
Mr. Woogie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't plan on making a career out of coming to this commission with weekly complaints. Changes are in order as a group, a watch group, and we will learn what needs to be changed. I started going to these commission meetings many years ago because then the commission were not obeying the state and federal laws. They seemed like they could kind of do what they wanted. I am blessed. I can read. I listen to educational TV and I learn a lot from that. In my endeavor of observation and sharing my experience, and it was, I was treated like an enemy. Why would that happen? Your people should not have to be watched. I would like to share some of the things found out by going to the open records. Back then, county employees, the cheating was common. Taking diesel fuel and gasoline and charging on a credit card. One of the places here in Ottawa, a parts place, go in there and buying stuff for a '78 Ford. I didn't think the county had that. One particular incident was the taking of chainsaws and not returning them. One person that I personally liked, and he did an exceptional job. He happened to be one of the leaders. He had a county truck and rode barriers. And when there was a problem, he would go out and immediately take care of these problems. And he kept the intersection safe and clear. There's been lawsuits against the county on that. That particular person defended that employee and said that employee was a valuable person to the county, and he probably was. It's really too bad that both of their people lost their jobs because of the abuse of the credit cards that were charged to the county and of theft. If our system doesn't behave and takes advantage of the people that deserve fairness and justice in the system, they too will fall by the wayside. There needs to be changes. It's going to work, take work on your part. With all due respect, know who you can trust. Those that are power crazy and exercise poor judgment need to be kicked to the curb. Thank you for your undivided attention. Have a blessed day.
Consent agenda today would include meeting minutes from the 18th and tax change orders, negative $1,578.22. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
That moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Items of business, first of which is consider the fiscal year 2021 adult fourth quarter budget adjustments for the community corrections. Good morning, Dustin.
Good morning, commissioners. The first item we have for your approval this morning is to adjust our fourth quarter of fiscal year 2021's budget. We do this from time to time. If our total adjustments are over $5,000, we are required to have those approved by you and by our advisory board. And for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 21, that total was $6,763.73. The attached adjustment report shows the items that we had some shortfalls and which items we had some surpluses that we are moving to those shortfalls to make the workbook items all reconcile. So I will stand for any questions at this time.
These standard. We need to do this for the state. Is there anyone want to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 adult fourth quarter budget adjustment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Second item of business, also with community corrections. Go ahead, Dustin.
Thank you. The second item is for your approval of the fiscal year 2022 Adult Carryover Reimbursement Plan. We have to submit a plan for these funds. These are funds that we collect throughout the year from our clients for supervision fees or for drug testing services. And these funds, as opposed to our grant funds, we get to roll over from year to year. And so when we do that, we have to submit a plan to the state on how we intend to use those funds. So you have two breakdowns, basically, of those funds. One's a budget summary and one's a budget narrative. It's pretty similar to what we had last year. We did collect a few dollars this year that we did not spend. So the total amount is a little bit higher than fiscal year 2021, but overall, it's pretty standard as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
Listed out there is a handful of items that those funds are going to use to help take care of for next year. There are a motion to... Make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 Adult Carryover Reimbursement Plan. That would be approved. This would be approved. All right.
Second. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Go ahead, Dustin, with the third one.
Third, we have the Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement Plan. You'll notice that it's substantially different in dollar amount than the adult plan. We don't typically collect as many fees from our juvenile clients just based on them being juveniles. But we are required to submit a breakdown for this as well. These are the same types of funds. We collect them for supervision fees and for drug testing services. Again, this amount is pretty similar to what we submitted last year for fiscal year 21. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
All right, and this is the fiscal year 2022 Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement Plan. Anybody care to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Dustin.
Fourth item is to consider awarding a bid for skim coating and painting project here at the annex. Brandon Sands, our maintenance director.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so we're looking to award the bid for the skim coating project and painting here in the annex. Just as a reminder, this covers all the main hallways and the commission chambers here with an alternate to do the public restrooms as well. Let's see, that base bid, just to do the hallways and the commission chambers here came in at $32,525. And then to include the restrooms would increase that to $38,775. We had two bidders that submitted their bids, and this was the lowest responsible bidder that we had, so.
Were they both local?
No, the other one was somewhere out of Kansas City, somewhere.
I like the fact that this is a local. Is this about what you thought it was coming at?
Yes. Yep.
I think it does seem very reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, this was right around what we were kind of budgeting for anyway. So in fact, it's a little bit less, I think, so.
So we need to decide whether or not to include the alternate for the restrooms. Fairly reasonable amount. I think the restrooms could use a brightening up.
Well, and just by way of background, we've talked about the annex on our facilities tour for the last couple of years. I mean, we own the annex building, obviously, and we've talked about protecting our investment. The common areas of the annex are, I mean, they're dated. When we try and change signs on the walls, we can't remove signs without tearing the wallpaper. And so then, you know, you tear the wallpaper, you put another sign, but you can still see where the wallpaper is torn out. I mean, this would allow us to, it's going to put skim coat over it so we can patch it. We can add and remove signs easily. I just think it'll allow us to spruce it up and make it so much more adaptable moving forward as well.
Absolutely.
Is there a consensus? Everybody OK with going ahead and taking that alternate to do the restrooms as well?
I think it's something we've been planning for a long time and ain't nothing. And it's good to see our local contractors willing to do it. It's such a, that way you get a comparison to what, you know, what they're offering. So I think I'll make a motion to go forward with the whole project. Lloyd Meldrum.
Including the alternate, all right.
Yep.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
Thanks.
Cold, if you're OK with it, I want to have Brandon discuss the flooring project as well.
So we picked out some color options to do for the hallways. I meant to bring them today, and I totally forgot. But we talked about, at one point, doing the commission chambers as well. And so I just kind of was looking for some feedback from you all and kind of what your thoughts were on how we wanted to do this. I mean, as you can see here, we've kind of got this border around the room with a different color. Do we want to do something similar to that? Are we OK with the floor just being all one color? Just looking for a little bit of guidance there before we move forward with getting that RFP put out.
And we can certainly make this a study session item as well. I just, we're on the cusp of doing an RFP for the flooring, and so we assumed you would want to do this room and just...
Looking at hard surface in here or carpet?
I think that the hard surface would be a better option in here, just for cleanup. We've got a few stains in here just because this room is used for luncheons and things like that a lot. And so that would make cleanup a lot easier. So I would prefer that we go for a hard floor, but...
Will that change the acoustics?
It may a little bit. There's options to alleviate that. You know, we can put up some of the acoustic panels on the wall in a few places to help solve that problem if it becomes an issue.
I don't see what difference it would have to have a border. It'd be easier for replacement, just to have the one so that no matter where it is, you don't have to have two things of replacement.
Probably be cheaper as well.
Yeah.
When Brandon has his flooring samples, we may bring him back in and we'll either tack it on to an existing study session or we'll discuss it at a regular meeting. But that way, you guys can look at it, see it. I think it's important that the five of you are OK with the material that's used, the color and whatnot. So why don't we just plan on doing that at an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
OK, all right, thanks.
Brad. Roy and I noticed this morning that, I don't know if it does it every time, but that slider door, did you come in at this morning?
Yes, sir, that...
Not going all the way back?
Yeah, there was a, somebody had turned the knob on that and just got it to where it was only opening part.
They can still go, I had the only concern I had. I couldn't measure it. Wheelchair would be the only thing.
Yep. I just got that corrected, so it's all good to go.
Way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
All right, we're on the staff reports. Go ahead.
Yeah, very brief update. Had a discussion with Janet earlier this week about stimulus funds, and obviously, we haven't started that process yet. And we haven't received like a huge influx of requests recently, but we have seen a steady stream of requests. I just want to remind the five of you that our COVID response is still an eligible use and could arguably be the primary use of those funds. Now, to be clear, you know, we're not going to need $5 million for COVID response, but as we've started working closer with the schools, realizing the potential enormous amount of testing that's going to have to be done. I mean, we may need to add more staff. So I just want to caution you that there are absolutely going to be ongoing COVID-19 related expenses. And I would much rather use stimulus funds that are designed for that before we use Franklin County taxpayer dollars. And so no decisions, no anything that need to be made today, but please just know that we will likely recommend holding a portion of that funding back in order to cover that. And as I've said several times, these funds don't have to be spent till the end of 2024. So it's not like there's a rush on any of it, but just as ideas continue to flow in, and there are so many good ideas, ideas that we're excited about, I would just caution you to remember that we need to hold some back to ensure that we have the staffing in place to help the community, help our schools. And so I'll use that as a lead in to Casey. I think she's going to give a COVID update today, but that's all I have, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. OK, I know everybody's tired of hearing about COVID, and I'm actually really getting tired of reporting about COVID. But the sad reality is it's getting actually scarier in our area instead of better. Our active case count has remained averaged in the 80s the last few weeks. But we are seeing a lot of testing being done. There's a line out there constantly at the trailers, and we're already seeing a lot of quarantines from schools, and they're only a week and a half in, most of them. So our August positivity rate at this point is 12.4%. But I think the most important thing to mention right now is that the status of our hospitals in the Kansas City metro area is really a crisis situation. They're not taking any new patients. I know as of this morning, Thompson, an email, and Advent Health Shawnee Mission, and OPR, and KU Med, all three of our biggest like transfer hospitals are at high volume and are diverting ambulances. The other one that's scary is also Children's Mercy's main campus up by KU Med is diverting all ambulances to their south location. They're not taking any more patients at the main hospital, and that's Children's Mercy, like that's kids. And this isn't just scary for kids with COVID. This is scary for anybody that has trauma or any type of injury. The next nearest children's hospital is Wesley in Wichita. So it's getting really scary with the hospitals. So wear a helmet if you're outside. Stay safe. Schools are starting testing, or we're working with schools on some testing. I know the USD 290 Board just determined on Monday night that they're also going to start testing. So we, that's, it's a big undertaking. It's mainly their partnership with KDHE, but we have to aid in that with them, and we'll be doing the PCR tests for them. So if somebody tests at the school positive with the Binax Rapid Test that they're doing, which is also a nasal swab, but not like a brain swab, I guess is the best way to say it. They, if they test positive with that, then they have to have a PCR test, which has to be done by our staff. So we expect to see more testing. OU is actually going to start doing that as well for all of their sports teams. And although they can't partner with KDHE because that's just a high school program, OU was doing it last spring for all their sports teams, and we helped with that as well. So we expect to see a lot more tests for that. And then the other one exciting news is that the FDA has fully approved the Pfizer vaccine this week. So, and our health department is starting to schedule flu clinics as well with their vaccine clinics. So, does anybody have any questions?
Did the USD 290 continue the mask?
They have masks in place until they get testing in place, and they set a threshold, I believe it's 3% positivity rate. If they have 3% of their students positive with COVID, then they go back to masks. But they'll also be testing students. So if a student is a close contact in a classroom, instead of quarantining, having to be out of school, they will test every day for seven days. Now, this has not been, this is what was decided at their board meeting. They have a lot of logistics to work through, and none of that will start until they feel confident that they have it in place. They're expecting at least a month to get that put into place, so.
Casey, there's confusion out there amongst some of the schools about people that have been in contact or have had the virus, whether who should be, who should wear masks and who should not be masked, whether they should come back to school and not come back to school. And if they had the virus and got over, should they have to wear a mask or not wear a mask? And there's quite a bit of confusion on...
So Ottawa...
How to go right with that, how to do that?
So Ottawa, Franklin County has quarantine guidelines that are published on our website. Obviously, if they call the health department, we can walk anybody through what that looks like, who should be quarantining when. They can call me if they want. I can walk somebody through that. Dealt with it enough at this point. But USD 290 does have a mask mandate, so all students have to wear masks at this point. The other outlawing districts in our county do not. But if somebody's a close contact and they're quarantined, then they shouldn't be at school at all, whether they have a mask on or not because unless there is mask-to-mask contact, so like, for example, at USD 290 with all the kids wearing masks, if there's somebody that ends up positive in a classroom, because all of those kids are wearing masks, then they don't necessarily count as a close contact. But say at West Franklin, if somebody comes into a classroom that's positive, all the other kids that are not, you know, if they're not, the infectant person is not wearing a mask and the other students are not wearing a mask, then they're all technically a close contact and should be quarantined.
And I, Roy, I would just encourage folks to reach out to the health department if they have questions. I mean, we do have quarantine guidelines, and those quarantine guidelines are based on guidance from CDC and from KDHE. And that's the same approach that Franklin County has used throughout the duration of this pandemic. We have followed the guidance given to us by the federal and state government. And if folks have questions and call the health department, we can walk them through that. And so that's what I would encourage you to tell your constituents when they reach out to you.
So the bottom line is that if the kids are wearing masks, if there was a mask requirement by the schools, then we would not be seeing a mask quarantine. So, I mean, it's an easy fix. Maybe not so easy to tell your constituents this is what it is, but it is an easy fix to make sure that we don't get to that point.
Yeah. I will, to your point too, Roy, we have a graphic that's more photo, has pictures on it. It's a little easier to follow than all the verbiage that Dr. Ransome just gave the green light on yesterday, last night. So we'll be putting that out and also giving it to schools to share with all of their students because it hopefully better explains to parents, you know, if my child is fully vaccinated and wearing a mask, this is the scenario. If my child is not vaccinated at all, not wearing a mask, like this is the scenario and what they need to do. So it kind of runs through a lot of different scenarios to help with that.
If a kid is fully vaccinated, but they're not wearing a mask, they still have to quarantine or not?
No, our quarantine guidelines are a little bit different for those who are vaccinated.
Not, that's only going to be in elementary school. That's only going to be junior high or high school situation.
Right. And I'll be sure to share that with all of you commissioners, too. I think it's pretty helpful to understand our quarantine guidelines.
I know you're going to have a vaccination clinic at West Frank, or Pomona.
Yes, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow?
It's tomorrow, Thursday, the 26th, from, I believe it's 2:00 to 6:30. And they're encouraging people to make appointments through the health department, but walk-ins are definitely welcome.
And there's one in Princeton for September?
Yes, that will be mainly second doses, but they will also still encourage somebody that, you know, has decided they want to go ahead and get their first dose to come in. But that was, that's scheduled for second doses from the previous Princeton clinic. Yep. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, David.
OK, so since last week, we've hauled rock to seven of the nine blade districts. We've completed ditching and road improvement projects on Alabama Road north of Ellis Terrace, Indiana Road south of Kingman, and Kingman Road east of Florida. And we're currently working on ditching projects on Clark Terrace east of Virginia and on Kingman Road east of Nebraska. Crews have also, in that time period, replaced a crossroad tube at Nebraska and Kingman, that intersection area. They have repaired and replaced a couple of entrances along Old 50. We have spent parts of three days patching mostly along Old 50. And then, as seems to be a weekly occurrence, we spent a couple of days, parts of a couple of days, picking up trash from illegal dump sites, one of them along Old 50 for a couple hundred yards where trash was just scattered out. So we continue to do those sorts of things. From a project standpoint, the chip seal project is complete, and we expect the paint crew in sometime in September to take care of that. Hopefully, the first part. We're still trying to nail down the exact dates when they're going to be here. We had a very productive meeting with KDHE last Wednesday about the landfill. There were no significant factors that were discussed that would prevent us from moving forward the way that we had planned. And SCS is certainly underway with those project details. I also, yesterday, was able to speak with Bartlett West, and they are wrapping up the proposal on Old 50. There's a pretty good possibility that that'll be delivered to me by the end of this week. If I have time to review it and if there are no significant changes with that... I'll get it on next week's agenda for you to review and potentially approve. The survey work for this shop site is scheduled for September 6th, when they'll be on-site to complete that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I know we occasionally get requests for speed limit signs on gravel roads and that sort of thing. But I did get a request, there's a subdivision, I'm forgetting the name of it, right on 68 Highway by the gas station and whatnot. No, the leadeders addition there, some of the citizens in there would like to see speed limit signs posted inside the subdivision. That's a hard surface road. I wanted to get your opinion on that before I move forward with those plans.
That's pretty confined in the leadedder condition.
It is.
Will they look at that 15 mile an hour?
No, nothing quite like that, but they seem to have some issues with folks driving excessively fast, in their opinion. And I told them I wasn't sure how the commission felt, because we haven't had this discussion. And, you know, if this is something we want to take a long view at and discuss in greater detail at another time, I'm happy to do that, but I definitely wanted to mention it.
I guess you can't ask them to slow down if you don't have anything that says that they're not supposed to.
Well, you know, you're supposed to drive to the conditions of the road and those sorts of things, but...
Do they have a homeowners association out there?
I'm sure that they probably did originally. Whether or not it's still intact and active, I kind of doubt that it is, but I don't know for sure.
I think they got some covenants, but I don't know much there about homeowners sale.
You looped the sheriff into this discussion?
I haven't yet, but I certainly will, and I encourage them to reach out to the sheriff as well.
I don't know that this is anything that the board necessarily needs to weigh in on today, but just other than know that David has had this request made to him, and we can talk to the sheriff about it. I mean, I, some of that, I mean, a speed limit sign maybe has a deterrent effect, but we would also want to know, well, does he have the staff to go in and patrol through that area every now and again, so.
And I will definitely follow up with Sheriff Richards.
I definitely wouldn't be in favor of a one-off. Everybody wants a speed limit sign in front of their house and doesn't want the inconvenience of speed limit slowerd everywhere.
I think we've talked about speed limits in different parts of the county. It doesn't really...
Well, especially in that instance, it's a dead-end road. Whoever's driving that way lives there.
I provided them no assurances that this would go anywhere, but I, they, I told them that I would mention it and get some feedback and go from there. So I feel like I've done, fulfilled that expectation.
Not against the idea, but I think it'd have to be part of a bigger discussion, because if you just... Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Anything with clerk's office? Commissioners, Don?
Nothing.
All right, right?
Nothing.
Nor do I. I am?
Last Wednesday, I drove to Topeka to meet with KACC directors to do some planning for our October meeting. We're still kind of figuring out where they want to go with that organization. The county commissions are a little different, because for one, you can't get more than, you know, if you have three, you can only have one in a car, or if you have five, you can have, anyway. And we're also subject to, we might get voted out. So you might, you know, get involved in the organization and then not be there anymore. So they're still trying to figure out where they want to go with that. On Thursday, I did go to the reception for the new chief executive officer of OU, as well as David Lee was also there, representing the county. I've been trying to pronounce his name, but he's a really nice gentleman, and his wife also is an English professor at OU. So it was a great networking opportunity to do that. The city of Ottawa continues to try to figure out where they want to go on their budget, whether they want, they're still even contemplating trying to be budget neutral, or, you know, exactly, do they give everybody everything they want, or do they cut it down a little bit, or however, where, how they're going to... They're still working on refinancing their debt, and by, I think, by September 1st, it should be finalized. And they're actually, the amount of money that they're supposed to save on that now is probably north of $600,000, which is even a little more than when they started, so that's going to be a good thing for them. The Coves, lots for sale actually today. I think we decided maybe 11 o'clock, is it? And also, they're, I mean, they are trying to be proactive as far as helping the housing situation. I think they did do consideration on some of the lots that they still have available at the Lakeside Lots on 15th Street. I think they're finding that there are a lot of easements in there, and it's going to be pretty hard to maybe develop those lots. But they also own some other lots around town, and I think they're kind of looking through their inventory and saying, well, so what else could we have available, or could we make available to do that? And other than the fact that Pfizer's a go, so if you're still on the line about getting your vaccine, it's be a great time to do it. We are, I think we're all kind of concerned about going into the fall, with school starting, kids still not being able to get vaccinated. We were really hoping by this time that we wouldn't be talking about COVID, but it is definitely, but there's something we can do about it, and if we get everybody vaccinated, then it really would be over. So if you're still on the line, please consider getting your vaccine, and that's it.
All right, then. We look for more motion to adjourn. Yeah, go ahead, Brad. All right.
I met with Keaton Stone, the Boy Scout who was wanting to put that flag retirement bin. I met with him yesterday. He's good with putting it on 4th Street, just to the east of that brick walkway leading up to the memorial. Roy, I think that was a spot you had kind of mentioned. That might be a good place for it. He's happy with that as well, so if you all are in favor of that, then I'll let him know, and he's ready to get started on it, so.
What against that?
I'm good.
Good. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
So move. Adjourn, is there a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can't pose, then we adjourn.